All right, county commissioners are back in session. And this is a public hearing for a proposed road validation of the historic extension of North Beehive Road in Pocatello, Idaho. The rules and procedures for this hearing is as follows. This is a public hearing for public comment, and it is not a question and answer session. Everyone shall exhibit respectful behavior. Please direct your comments to the board up here, please. And please show respect for all opinions or comments given. Only one person may speak at a time. And when you come up, you will be given a limit of two minutes. Since we have a fairly large crowd today, we'll go two minutes with that. So we'll have a little timer here to go from there. And before you begin, please state your name and address for the record. In addition, if you're angry or upset, that's okay, but please don't take your anger out on us. We're just here trying to figure out what to do, okay? So if there's anyone that does not understand the procedures, just let me know, and we'll go from there. But with that, we have received several pieces of public testimony that are in the record. And with that, we will open up to start. So with that, we'll start with our staff report. Kyle from Roden Bridge, and then we'll go into the public hearing after that. So Kyle, and before you begin, Kyle, would you give us a definition of the purpose of this meeting and what a road validation is, please?
Okay. Kyle Bremister, Public Works Director. We're here for, it's in Idaho statute Title 40, Chapter 2, general provisions for a validation of a road. Part of that is if there's doubt that exists on what the road is via private, public, if the road has changed, or if the road is being used in a way that's not natural to what other county or government roads are. I think we're here because of the, kind of the first, where there's doubt that exists. So we're here for validation 25-2, as you said, Beehive Road. Heather Ann Larson from Echo Hawk is the applicant. Some of the stuff that we look at as staff in this situation is kind of the methods of a public road creation. Has it been formally declared by recordings or map? Like we do every five years, we do a county maintained or county right-of-way map. This is not shown on there. Is there a blanket legislative declaration? Is there any public use prior to 211881? Five years of public use? Five years of public use or maintenance? Common law dedication? The revised statute of 2477, which I think you'll hear about today? Dedication through plating? Most of the roads are done formally through plating. Or conveyance or condemnation? Staff, after review, has found that there has been no maintenance, no public funds have been used on the questioned road. We also went through the assessor's office to look for any kind of documentation or recordings about any easements, and none were found.
Okay. All right. With that, I would entertain a motion. Do you have any questions for staff or no?
No.
Okay. Then I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to reopen the public hearing this time.
Okay, we have a motion. If you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. So, Mr. Olson, Eric.
Yeah.
Okay, come on up. And again, just for, state your name and address, and then your two minutes will begin.
Eric Olson. I'm legal counsel for the applicant, the Murdochs, or the ultimate beneficiaries, the Murdochs. This matter comes before the commissioners this day, based on our application and seeking validation of RS 2477 right-of-way. To give you the historical context, you do have the three parcels up there on the computer screen. Those are all government parcels back in the late 1800s. And those, the farther two-south parcels, I'm authorized to speak on behalf of Dawn and Kathy Murdoch, who own the further south parcel. And then also, I'm authorized to speak on behalf of Ben Harris Lyon, who is the second parcel owner right there, where you're showing. And so specifically, we seek the validation of the historic right-of-way that provides access to those parcels. The historic right-of-way is an extension of North Beehive Road, and has been recognized in the historical documents since these parcels were initially homesteaded. We provided an application to the Roden Bridge Department that documents this historic validation. And I'll focus quickly on the key things. The historical maps and surveys is what we need to focus on. And specifically, the requirements of the Idaho Code 40-204A. And I'd like to draw the commission's attention to this statute, because our application fits all the legal requirements of 40-204A that provides for this public right-of-way per the RS 2477 legislation before it was drawn, withdrawn back in 1976. And the key requirements that have to be met is that the road that has been provided...
You can finish your thought.
The road that's been provided was in access and use prior to its withdrawal from the public domain. It was right over the subject property, the Slagels, who have denied access to Mr. Lyons and to the Murdochs. And we believe that that, per our application and the application of that statute, are entitled to validation of that public right-of-way.
Okay, thank you. Heather Larson? Go ahead and state your name, and again, your two minutes will start.
Heather Ann Larson, and I work at Echo Hawk and Olson, with Eric Olson as a paralegal. I actually conducted a site visit. Oh, so sorry.
You're done, thank you.
Oh, gosh. I actually, I conducted an onsite visit with both a surveyor, a licensed surveyor, and an archaeologist. And we walked the path. The archaeologist, we were only able to access the Lyon and Murdoch property. And then yesterday, we were provided access to access the Slagels' property with the surveyor. And the surveyor actually did waypoints, and as well as identified the location of the Lyon family cabin that's noted on the historic documents that were provided. And the surveyor, both the surveyor and the archaeologist, both confirmed that the road, as it existed in the 1901 survey, the 1961 survey, the topographical maps from 1935, 1940s, 1960s, and 66, all represent that the road and the cabin are in the same location, or reference the same location as they did on each of those maps. Additionally, on the topographical map, this road is a double-lined road. The topographical legend map indicates that is an excavated, improved road. It was in similar condition as Buckskin was, it just was not, but that was the access to the cabin that went along the property line that used to be the Girl Scouts. And that was, did not become, it was public land until 1950, until the 1950s, when it was granted also by the government as a public park, a public use. And then that was not, it remained in that grant until 2013, when it was privately sold.
Okay. Thank you. Preston Carter.
Preston Carter, representing the Slagels. Let me first just quickly lodge some objections. I think under this statute, the code requires that the commission consider all information related to the application. So I don't think two minutes of testimony complies with the statute. In addition, new evidence was provided this morning, we haven't had an opportunity to review. That is not consistent with due process. So there's a lot to cover here. They are claiming a road under RS 2477. That only applies, that allows creation of public roads prior to property being withdrawn from the public. This property was withdrawn from the public in 1959. The statutes in effect at the time governed whether a road was created. Those statutes in effect in 1959 required public maintenance to create a public road. There is zero evidence of public maintenance in the record. You heard Kyle testify that there was no public maintenance on this road. If you look closely at the evidence that they've presented, at most, there is evidence of some private maintenance after 1959. No public maintenance, no public road. They're seeking to construct a public road over my client's property. And I say "construct" because if you look at the photos, there is no road on the ground. 1959 is the relevant date. There was no public maintenance prior to 1959, no public road. Statute 40-204A was passed in 1993. It does not apply to land that was withdrawn from the public in 1959. So 40204A only applies to land that was in the public domain as of the time it was passed, which is 1993. So all this commission needs to look at, was there public maintenance prior to 1959? The answer is no. Therefore, there is no road. We addressed more legal details in our comment. In order to validate the road, the commission also has to make a finding that validation is in the public interest. Creating, constructing a new road over my client's property is not in the public interest.
Very good, thank you. Babette?
Babette Rose Slagel, 7060 North Beehive. Again, I'm going to be very quick about this. My entirety of comments have been presented to you via online email. Just to reiterate a couple things, since 1959, access has been by permission only, by the landowners. The public has never been given arbitrary access, and the residents in the entire neighborhood work together to maintain the status of our driveways, especially in the winter, during tough conditions. We feel, as new stewards of this land and the footpaths, we feel a huge responsibility to continue maintaining these trails for the benefit of ourselves and our neighbors. I'm going to skip ahead a little bit, just due to the time constraints, and just reiterate the environmental impact. If we were to have a road through the desired corridor that was mentioned by the applicants, no matter the prior private use, that corridor that has been pointed out to us as the desired corridor is through a wetland, and adjacent to the South Fork of Pocatello Creek. To imagine a roadway through there, let alone a public roadway, is just unimaginable, to be quite honest. Just knowing what the constraints are from environmental regulation, and obviously, you are all very aware of that, with road construction, we just, it's just unimaginable to consider a road through that drainage. Lastly, just to address, again, the personal impact and what we have to lose with the creation of a public access way through our private property. The request is that a public access way go through the entirety of our property onto private property. That doesn't match the concept of public access. Again, the last thing I'll state is just that when we purchased this property, we went above and beyond to be sure that there were no recorded easements through our property, and that we had an easement to access our property. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Chuck?
Thank you for doing this. I know it's thankless, probably most of the time. Do you know if you got my wife's comments?
Chuck, would you state your name for the record, please?
My name is Chuck Slagel, and I live at 7060 North Beehive in Pocatello. Our comments, Babette's comments, which boiled down over a couple weeks for about 12 minutes long, seems a little inappropriate that something of this magnitude, we get two minutes apiece to talk about. But if those are the rules, and those are the rules, and it's important that this is in the record. We sent it yesterday. Do you know if it was...
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. So, some of this is going to sound like opinion, but I'm speaking the truth to the best of my ability. So I believe that if there was more due diligence on the part of the board, or an appeal, or something that went back and really looked at the facts, that a couple things would come out. I think it's clear that these, that there is no public road. There's a trail. I'm sure Mr. Murdoch is going to show where things have happened, and a trail that could have been a road, but there is no road on our property. Starts off as a marsh, goes into a trail next to a stream within a couple of feet, goes into a marsh, and then it climbs the hill into kind of a more protected trail on the Murdochs and Lyons property. There's no road. And if somebody goes out and looks, and looks at it from that aspect, they're going to find that. There's no survey that finds the road. Some dotted lines, some ghost roads, some indication from the past that something was there. But you could not design a point outside of what they just surveyed yesterday and say, "This is where a road goes." So it's crazy to go in and say, "Make a public road where one might have been, but we can't clearly define it." And so there's no road. Public access through a wetland is crazy. Part of the reason we bought this property is because there are unique drainages, and we wanted to join a neighborhood that was protecting all these drainages. And all of a sudden, someone says, "Not only a drainage, we're just going to bust a 32-foot road up here that can take a fire truck to some condo in the future." It's just, it doesn't fit protecting wetlands. The Murdochs and the Lyons, let me finish this thought, are not victims. They have all sorts of options. They went through five different owners. They could have done a million things with easements, agreements, they did nothing. We're the victims of them taking a lazy approach of this thing, and assuming that they can show that they're a victim at the very end, which they're not. So, thank you.
Thank you. Wendy?
My name is Wendy Deffinger. I live at 6477 West Buckskin Road. I would like to concur with what counsel referred to as maintenance. In the 13 years that my husband and I have owned the property that we own, we have walked back on some of the trails back in the area on the map. You come to the end of paved Beehive, there's a short gravel road. And for the 13 years, most of that time, there was a fence with a chain around it, a padlock, and boulders pushed up against it that restricted travel by motorized vehicles. In the time that we walked back there, we've not seen motorized vehicles or anybody on them. And I have to concur with what everybody else has said. There is no road back there. It is a wet, boggy, marshy area. I would like to conclude with one last question. I don't understand why Mr. Murdoch needs public access through Beehive when he has public motorized access through the Black Rock Trail system, which cuts across the northeast corner of his parcel. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Brian Deffinger. Brian?
I'm not speaking.
Oh, okay. David Frederickson?
I've been very familiar with that property. Oh, my name is David Frederickson, 1017 Patriot in Chubak. I've been very familiar with that property since the late 50s, 59, 60, right in there. It's always been a private road, up until not too long ago, the county took over maintenance up to Ron Dykman's property. Above there, still private. When I had an opportunity to go up there one time, in the 60s, the gate was open, and it was posted, no access without permission by the Silver Sage Girl Scouts. Their caretaker was there, allowed me to come onto the property, and I was able to drive up the so-called road. I had to go across what we call a corduroy road, across the waterway, and went up, and I drove up to go up to see the shelter that's there. Beyond that point, it was a pickup, you could drive a pickup up there. Beyond that point, going up the bottom, the tracks petered out, you had a trail, you had a creek coming down the other side. I didn't dare drive further, because I didn't want to risk getting stuck in the mud where that creek was running. I got permission from the Girl Scouts to take Boy Scouts in there. The last time that I was up in there was in the early 80s. In all of my experience, 65 years, it's never been a public road until the lower part was paved. And from the end of the pavement up to there, it has always been private. And access was always, while the Girl Scouts had it, access was always required with permission. It had a chaming fence and a chaming gate with the top pointing, so you couldn't crawl over it very easily without getting scarred up. So, simply put, it is a private road, and should be, remain a private road.
Thank you. Ken?
I'll pass.
Pass?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's see.
Paul Allen?
Paul Allen, 7961 West Pocatello Creek Road. I'd simply like to concur and reinforce the statements and observations of our prior speaker. I've lived in the area since 1983, and I'm familiar with the properties since approximately 1985, at which time, there was evidence of a trail and some sort of private access to the Girl Scout link to in the area. There's clearly evidence of old, what appear to be logging roads, that extend up several of the drainages in the area. I have no idea what they date to, but it was probably the early 20th century. No evidence of maintenance since that time that I'm aware of. I'd like to express my support for maintaining the private nature of these properties. I'm not sure why simple ingress egress for the property owners shouldn't be valid. I'm not sure why public access should be necessary. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Dawn Murdoch?
Okay, I appreciate your time. I have to say that a lot of things that have been said here aren't quite true. Let me explain it a little bit, okay? If you all walked up there, you'd see what it's like, okay? You come up the Beehive Extension, you go through, and there was a left turn in the road. It went up, and then there's an exact right turn that goes up to the old Girl Scout camp. They put a nice roof on it now, it burned off once. But that's a nice wide way up there. We've driven up there, camped up there. And then, and then the whole question here is, they're denying access, that there ever was access, but why would they go to the trouble to take a cat and push gravel over the access, and fill it with trees so we couldn't get up there? We drove up to check the road four years ago. We go, "Oh, my gosh, here this gravel had been pushed over, the wetlands, whatever all this stuff we're talking about." And all kinds of trees have been put there to block it, okay? So if there was no access, why did they block it? Okay, that's a big thing. Then if you go up a little further, the creek is, we drove it in a little bit, but that's where you drive. There's a little spring that comes down, and then it joins in the Slagel property, a major roadway, cut right into the side of the hill. There's a logging road above it, and a major roadway cut there with a grade that goes down to the little creek that goes up into the cabin that Lyons built up there. And they drove up there and filled the cabin, enjoyed it for years and years and years. So, and then what we found is the old maps that show this, that's shown on the maps. And you can see the cabin location, and it's pretty hard to deny that there's old maps that show that's there. And that's why it qualifies as a 2477, you know, historic roadway, okay, and protected by Congress, so that these land grants that they got up there, where they bought it back in 1906, or whatever it was, have access. There's no access over the top. You can ride a four-wheeler up there and come down, but you can never get in to enjoy it. But the real reason is, this little guy right here, professional artist, since the road was blocked four years ago, she hasn't been able to set a foot on that property, or even a little wheel, because you can't get up there with the blockage of the supposed no access.
Okay, thank you. Ron?
Ron Dykman, 7070 Beehive Road. So I purchased the property in 1999. I purchased an easement from Pat Rowley. And I know that Pat Rowley had also sold an easement to Piles, which Piles later sold the property to the Slagels. When I showed up in '99 to look at the property the first time, the, there was a gate at the bottom, and there was a foot trail, took you in about 500 feet. At that 500 feet is where I built my new road to go to the house. It takes a left and meanders on up to our place, but after that, at that 500 feet, I put another gate in, so that I could close the first one, what I built. I could close the second one, keep it permanently closed, and keep other people from going up in there. And that was the agreement that I had with Rowley, is I would put another barrier there for people not to be able to get up in there. I'm the one that put the rocks in place. That road was nothing but dirt when I purchased it. There's never been an ounce of gravel on that that I've ever seen, prior to me putting it there. And I probably got 40 truckloads of gravel on there, and I'll bet you Slagels have 10. So I'm the only one that's maintained that since 19, since 2001, when I moved in. There's really been no other vehicles up in, above there prior, after that. Before that, I'd say there's probably never, not vehicles in there for at least 15 years, because Rowley's owned it for seven, he would never let anybody in. The other guy was a fishing game cop, he would never let anybody in, and he lived there for seven years. I know that there is a chaming fence there that the Girl Scouts did have set up for purposes of no trespassing, et cetera. And that fence is still, the posts with the concrete posts were buried in the ground, are still there, actually. So that, the cabin they're talking about is, I've been there. It's probably eight feet by 12 feet, four to five feet tall, with a door that's about that far off the ground. It's not a cabin, it might be a hunting cabin, and that's about it. So, my time's out. I'm totally against it.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
All right. I show no one else on the list, so with that, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to close the public hearing.
All right, we have a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Commissioner Moser, any questions?
So, from what I'm hearing, this proposed, turning this into a public road, goes into two parcels that are privately owned. Doesn't go into any place that is the public's. Is that your understanding, Kyle?
Yes, that's correct.
So, to me, this sounds like a civil matter, rather than a county matter. So, if you have something to say, then I can make a motion.
Yeah, just real quick, if we were to validate this, then we would now begin to assume responsibility for developing and maintaining a road up there that currently, we stop well below that. Is that correct?
Yeah, so if you look at the, you can kind of, I can try to flow it up a little bit, but as they've talked before, that's, that blue line is where we stop. Here's Mr. Dykman's property here. There is an easement for them to go through here, but this is where we stop. Then you have the two parcels that we're talking about to the south. And I think they do show that there is some sort of roadway and some kind of access, but... And I think they do show that there is some sort of roadway and some kind of access, but in the past, as far as we have been able to dig up, it's always been fenced as permission-only private. So I don't know unless it fits a different statute that it fits in as a county road.
So in your opinion, this has never been a county road?
Yes.
Okay. Anything from legal? Any thoughts from legal? Okay. I would entertain your motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion that we do not make this a public road, but it is a civil matter between landowners, and this is still a private road.
Okay, we have a motion. Any further discussion, which I have no other comments, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. It remains as is. Thank you.